Well, I'd like to call the meeting of the U-46 School Board to order. I'd like to ask if there's any clarifications or additions to be made to the agenda at this time. I think we have things lined up so that we should be kind and responsive to our guests. Why don't we begin with going around and, Rob, starting with yourself, go around and[29.07][29.07]introduce ourselves for our viewing public? Rob Redden, Principal, Essex High School.
Gary Baker, Board Member, Essex Town.
Alba Bardier, Board Member, Essex Town.
Judith Di Nova, Superintendent.
Brian Doniou, Chair of the U-46 Board and Representative from Essex Junction.
Grant Geisler, Chief Financial Officer for CCSU.
Jack Balindor from Essex Junction.
Bob Travers, Director, Center for Technology Essex.
Great, thank you. I just want to clarify, did people see in their org notes, I think maybe the first link, there's been an update that there's a recommendation for higher in the org notes? Everybody else set with that? Okay. Great. So why don't we begin with visitors or staff to be heard? Okay. And why don't we turn it over to Grant, who will run us through the budget presentation for FY16, after which we have an action item to approve that as our budget to recommend to the voters, as well as to review our warning for the end of the meeting.
I have a few extra copies of the briefing. Does anybody need one?
If not.
Okay. This briefing, as you know, represents the culmination of several budget work sessions and encompasses both Essex High School and the Center for Technology Essex. The Board's guidance was to maintain educational quality, support school action plans. For the high school budget, we were asked to be sensitive to the burden on taxpayers by providing a budget with minimal increase to education spending. And for the CTE budget, we were asked to develop a budget with minimal increase to There are several state laws and educational quality standards that impact the school district. We can have no more than 200 students per counselor. Our budget must cover half of the dual enrollment costs. Personalized learning plans are now required for all ninth graders and for any dual enrolled students. There is a requirement for retirement for federally funded positions to be paid by us. They're no longer paid by the state, which is an impact to CTE of about, I think, $24,000. And the excess spending threshold is now pegged to FY14 instead of being associated with the most recent prior year. This slide is a quick overview of the budgets. The charts will be discussed a little later on, so I'm just going to point out a few details for now, starting with the high school. First off, the high school budget is increasing by 1.9%. The annual increase in education spending since FY11 is 2.5%, which is below the statewide average. The excess spending threshold is $17,103, and that puts us about $1,000 under, safely under, the threshold. The district spending adjustment is up 2.8%, and that's the percent that taxes, property taxes, would increase if the base rate and the common level of appraisal didn't change. The capital plan was limited to 1% of the high school general fund budget, and the CT budget is only increasing 1.1%, and tuition will increase 1.5%. So we'll get into the details, and we'll start with the high school general fund budget. And here are just a few thoughts on educational quality related to the high school. We received congratulations from the Agency of Education for a 93% graduation rate. Over 80 students are participating in dual enrollment opportunities. 80% of our students plan to attend college, which is above the state average. Seven of our students have been nominated for the Presidential Scholars Program. 275 students took 510 advanced placement tests, and 59% of them received college credit by scoring a four or higher. The FY16 budget supports continued dual enrollment, administration of the ACT for every student, adds a literacy specialist and a school counselor, and provides for 181 course offerings, 18 of which are advanced placement, 263 virtual learning courses, and 30 of those are advanced Enrollment projections are a key factor in developing the budget. The FY15 projection was for 1,234 students, and the actual count was 1,237, so we were very close. The new projections show only a drop of four students for FY16. Overall, we'll have a slight decrease in the next couple of years, and then we're going to build back up to the 1,230 to 1,250 range, which is, as you can see by the chart, fairly stable, and obviously not the norm for school districts in Vermont. This pie chart shows revenue sources. About 86% of our funds are considered state funds. Nearly 13% are local revenues, and most of that relates to tuition from sending towns. There are no federal revenues this year since the Air Force canceled AFJROTC and will not be providing any salary assistance funds. Other revenues are just a bond defeesance fund that helps offset some long-term debt. Significant revenue changes are shown on this chart. The fund balance is down $126,000. As we have mentioned, you know, we're fortunate to have any kind of surplus to roll forward, but the amount continues to decline as we build tighter and tighter budgets. Regular ed tuition is down $160,000, since we project about 11 less students next year. Special ed revenues from sending schools is down about $181,000, since we anticipate less needs for students who are tuitioned in. The education spending grant basically just balances the revenues with investments. State special ed revenues or reimbursements are up $351,000, and that's based on the Agency of Education's estimate after they reviewed our service plan. The increase in revenues aligns with higher special education costs that you'll see in a few minutes. Tech center on behalf tuition is up about $50,000, since our six semester average increased by about 4.7 students, and the rate also increased slightly. Special ed transportation aid is down a little bit because they're using a lower percentage that's being applied to our allowable costs, and that's a statewide issue. Air Force Junior ROTC salary assistance will no longer be received since, as I mentioned, the Air Force canceled the ROTC program due to low participation. And then all the other categories, when you combine them, are fairly level. You can see just a $2,000 increase overall with everything else. This pie chart shows expense categories. Excuse me. Salaries and benefits are nearly 71% of the budget. Tech tuition is a little over 5%. Another 10% or so goes to the supervisory union for both supervisory union and special education assessments. Other categories like utilities and debt service are also identified here. And the remaining 4.4% is used for other requirements such as dual enrollment, supplies, equipment, travel, books, et cetera. And that is what we've captured as "other." Investment changes from FY15 to FY16 are shown on this bar chart. Salaries are down 1% due to staffing reductions. Benefits are up 1.6%, largely due to a 4.5% health rate increase. Tech tuition is up due to increased number of tech students. Special ed services are up due to the need for another social worker, which is contracted out. The special ed assessment increase is associated with additional outside placements largely. And the other category is increasing for dual enrollment and for administration of The next few slides are going to show significant expense changes. Salaries and benefits make up, as I said, over 70% of the budget, so we review that very thoroughly. We look at enrollment projections, class size standards, and registration history. The staffing adjustments drive a decrease of about 1%, which will be shown on the next slide. The benefit increase of 1.6%, as I mentioned, is due to the health rate increase of 4.5% Non-personnel special ed costs are increasing nearly $312,000. Most of that increase relates to a higher number of outside placements, but we also have increased needs for the inclusion program, and, as I mentioned, we need to contract for an additional social worker. The increased special ed reimbursements that I mentioned a few slides ago will help cover the majority of these costs. This slide shows all of the staffing adjustments. The increase in certified staff for a literacy specialist and school counselor are offset by the reduction of Air Force Junior ROTC instructors. Based on enrollment projections and registration history, we are reducing another, about 1.6 full-time equivalent positions, which are spread across multiple areas, as you can see in the lower part of that top chart. There is about a $22,000 increase in support staff to provide for lunch supervision, as well as increased monitoring of parking lots and hallways. Tech tuition is up $131,000, since our six semester average increased, and since the tuition rates are increasing slightly. Testing materials are up $16,000 to allow all students to take the ACT once during their tenure at the high school. Student special programs is where we captured the dual enrollment costs, so that's up about $27,000. The special ed assessment is down $42,000, since our percentage of staff and computer devices decreased compared to other districts. Maintenance of buildings and grounds is up about $40,000. Most of these costs relate to recurring requirements, but there are a couple of specific projects that are identified for FY16. The electricity budget is based on a three-year average with about a 3% annual rate increase. Athletic equipment is up about $12,000, and the items that are being purchased are listed on the slide. Debt service is down about $17,000, since long-term interest decreases with each passing year. And then whenever you combine all the other categories, you can see that those are fairly level, just an increase of $2,600. The grade 9 through 12 homestead tax rate calculation is shown on this slide. The top chart has already been shown and identifies how the district spending adjustment is calculated. On the bottom chart, you see the Tax Commissioner's recommended base rate of $1, which is 2 cents above FY15. To come up with the tax rate, you take the base rate multiplied by the district spending adjustment, then you multiply by the percentage of students in each community that are in grades 9 through 12, and then you divide by the CLA. So the resulting tax rate is about 55 cents for Essex Junction and about 58 cents for This slide shows the grade 9 through 12 income sensitivity rate. Skipping to the bottom chart, you'll see the base rate is 1.94%, which is a significant increase from 1.8% this year. The base rate is multiplied by the district spending adjustment and the percentage of students who are in grades 9 through 12. The resulting rates are 1.08% for Essex Junction and 1.12% for the Town. This slide compares FY15 and 16 tax rates for grades 9 through 12, and then also shows the implications. Property taxes should increase nearly 2 cents in Essex Junction and about 2.5 cents in Essex Town, meaning the impact for every $100,000 in property is about $19 in Essex Junction and about $25 for Essex Town. The impact this year is much less significant than what we experienced for FY15, as you recall. The income sensitivity impact is a little more dramatic since the base rate increased so much. Since most people pay taxes, education taxes, based on a combination of property and income sensitivity, and since the 9 through 12 rate has to be combined with the pre-K through 8 rate, the Town Meeting tax grid is a good way to estimate what your actual taxes are going to be. Unfortunately, those grids aren't available yet, but they should be included in the annual report that goes out and should be available in time for the informational hearing. So in summary, for the high school general fund, we believe the budget has been reduced to the maximum extent that we could without impacting educational quality or reducing programs, and the staffing was reduced in line with enrollment. The budget increase is $451,000, or 1.9%. Education spending increase is $646,000, or 3.6%. The property tax rate increase is $19 to $25, depending on the community, for every $100,000 in property, and would be about half of that amount if it wasn't for the 2 cent increase in the base rate. So we're going to move on to the capital plan. In FY16, the capital plan was limited, as it has been over the past several years, to 1% of the general fund budget, and the requirements include continued renovations to bathrooms, resurfacing the track, unanticipated repairs for heat plant, things like boiler replacement, things that pop up, information technology infrastructure such as switches and server upgrades. And then what you can see highlighted on this chart is that we're probably going to need to arrange for a bond for roof replacement within the next few years. And the work that we're planning to do with the front entrance will be accomplished using funds that we had previously set aside for kitchen floor repair. The next slide shows what we're planning for the front entrance. So we're going to replace the doors, which need to be replaced anyway, they're rotting out, but we're going to replace the doors with doors that have glass panels. We're going to replace the surrounding panels with glass, which will make the front entrance a lot brighter, a lot more inviting. And we're going to finish off with CTE's general fund. Some notes on educational quality for CTE. We provide nearly 1,000 instances of work-based learning experience and placements and career work experience. 70% of the students earn industry-recognized credentials. 12 programs offer 23 dual enrollment classes, and 150 courses are being completed by students. The budget continues to support those areas and also provides additional certified staff for embedded math and science instruction. CTE revenues are associated with CTE's six semester average, which peaked in FY11 and 12 and is settling in at about 370. For the past three years, as you can see by the slide, we've been challenged with significant reductions, but we are leveling off now. This pie chart shows where the students come from for CTE. We receive students from over 30 towns and schools. About 65% of them, though, come from Essex High School, MMU, CVU, Milton, and Colchester. This overview slide shows the budget's only increasing $97,000, or 1.1%. The six semester average is down 1.6%, which drives the need to increase tuition, but only slightly, an increase of $250, or 1.5%. This pie chart shows where the revenues come from for CTE. Nearly 53% of the funds are considered state revenue. Tuition from sending schools and adults makes up about 38% of the revenue, and the remaining revenues are largely made up of prior year surplus or funds from our one federal grant, which is Carl Perkins. This slide shows significant revenue changes. The fund balance is up 75K. We actually had a larger FY14 surplus in CTE. In total, tuition is fairly level, since the decrease in six semester average is offset by a higher rate. Adult tuition is down, in part because VSAC is reducing the amount available to adult students. Program revenues are up about $44,000, because we've shifted student activity funds into the general fund. Carl Perkins is up about $5,000, but the actual impact is a decrease because we have to use $24,000 for retirement contributions that used to be paid by the state. The consolidation of all other revenues, when taken in total, is fairly level, actually a little bit of a decrease. This slide shows a history of our six semester average and also tuition. The tuition lines are broken out by the amount we announced for tuition, the amount we charged, and the allowable amount as calculated by the Agency of Education. And just another note, if we overcharge by more than 3%, then we have to provide a refund, which hasn't happened in any of the years on this slide. This pie chart is a breakout of expenses. When you include the shared service costs for Essex High School employees, salaries and benefits really make up over 77% of CTE's budget. The SU Assessment, debt service, technology, other utilities and significant areas are identified. The other category for CTE is 7.6%, which is a little higher than a high school, but that's to be expected since we have supply requirements for programs like cosmetology, pro foods, et cetera. And that also has increased a little bit because of shifting those student activity funds into the general fund. This bar chart shows investment changes from the FY15 budget to the FY16 budget. Salaries are up 1.3%. Benefits are up 8.1%, largely due to the health rate increase of 4.5%, but also due to that requirement to cover retirement for federally funded employees. All the other categories are pretty much minor compared to salaries and benefits, and we'll go into that in a little more detail on these next few slides. I already mentioned the salary and benefit increases. The next slide will show some of the staffing adjustments. The SU Assessment is down $10,000. Once again, your district had a lower percentage of staff and computer devices compared to others. Shared service personnel is up about $11,000 for Essex High School personnel that provide support to CTE, and that's basically just an inflationary increase. These are the staffing adjustments for CTE. As you can see, there are several small adjustments, and the overall impact is a minor increase of just $6,000, which will allow for integrated and embedded math and science instruction for common core and next-generation science standards, and also will allow students to receive credits from sending schools toward graduation requirements. Other professional services allows for industry-recognized credentials, dental service contracts, et cetera. The decrease is more in line with actual costs, and part of that decrease is due to the fact that in FY15, we had some funds in there for professional development from the Carl Perkins grant. Technology is up about $20,000. We'll be replacing the, oh, computer, animation and web design. Those IMAX are being replaced, and those are more costly than your typical computer. Funding for maintenance projects is down about $28,000, since we replaced several of the exterior doors in FY15 and don't need to do that again. Debt service is down, as was in the high school. All the other categories combined are fairly level, a little bit of a decrease there. As you can see, CTE receives revenue from several sources. The only tax implication to Essex Town and Essex Junction is the amount of money that's included in the high school budget for tuition for tech students. And to summarize, CTE, we attempted to keep the tuition as low as possible, even though the six semester average dropped slightly. The budget increase, as I have mentioned, is $97,000, or 1.1%, and the tuition increase is $250, or 1.5%. Just a reminder to everybody who's watching, the informational hearing is Monday, April 13th at 6:30 here at the high school auditorium, and the vote is Tuesday, April 14th, here at the high school for Essex Junction residents and over at Essex Middle School for town residents. And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, or if you're happy with the budget still, then you can take action.
Well, I'd like to point out that this evening's presentation is at the end of months of work with the staff, the principal administration. It also has had multiple budget sessions by the board, in which we did a line-by-line review of the budget, and so it's a culmination of a great deal of work. Grant, you shouldered much of that work. I appreciate it. I think the Board and everyone else as well appreciates the hard work, and also the work that goes in at the admin and staff level. It's great to know that the participation drove all the way down, and this reflects the best and most responsible budget we can put forward. So I'd be looking to have anybody ask their questions now, or if there are none, we could look to entertain a motion to approve the budgets. Are there any questions?
One quick one, and I just, I believe I understand it, Grant, but I just want to clarify. When we looked at the significant budget changes and we had fund balances for FY15 and FY16, those are forecasted for FY15 because we don't know what it's actually going to be until we're at the end of the year, correct?
Actually, no, there's a year kind of delay. So in FY14, the surplus from FY14 is carried into FY16. So those are real numbers.
That's right, that's right. Okay. Thank you. We've discussed this before, and you've reminded me, so thank you.
Sure. Anyone else?
The only comment I was going to make was, support the budget, looks good. But I think we understand that there are some real challenges coming up for next year, the next budget round, with healthcare and other challenges. Maybe some of those we can talk to Tim about a little later.
Well, entertain a motion to approve the EHS general fund budget of $24,465,011?
So moved. Second.
Aaron, and then seconded by Al.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions? Passes unanimously. And may I have a motion to approve the CTE general fund budget of $8,582,880?
So moved. So moved.
Al, then seconded by Aaron. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Passes unanimously.
Yep, that's good.
Great.
Do we need a third one for the capital fund? Or is that?
Yeah, it's covered within.
It's covered.
Yeah. So we will move on to our next agenda topic, which is adopt and sign the annual warning. I will read the warning, and then look for a motion to approve this warning and take action. It has signature lines for us all this evening if we do adopt it. So, Essex Community Educational Center, Union School Board 46, annual meeting and public information hearing, Monday, April 13th, 2015 at 6:30 PM. The legal voters of Essex Community Educational Center, School District Number 46, are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Essex Community Educational Center on Educational Drive in the auditorium of said school at 6:30 PM on Monday, April 13th, 2015, to take action upon the articles below, and thereafter to hold a public informational hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2016 budgets. Article 1, to elect a moderator for one year, a clerk for one year, and a treasurer for one year. Article 2, shall the Essex Community Educational Center, Union 46, authorize the school directors to borrow money by issuance of bonds or notes not in excess of anticipated revenues for the next fiscal year? That is the only action we take at our annual meeting. Whereupon after disposition of said business, said meeting shall be adjourned to the following day, Tuesday, April 14th, 2015, when legal voters are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Essex Middle School in the town of Essex between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and at Essex Community Educational Center in the Village of Essex Junction between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, respectfully to vote by Australian ballot on Articles 3 through 5. Article 3, shall the voters of Essex Community Educational Center, U46, appropriate $24,465,011 necessary for the support of Essex High School for the year beginning July 1st, 2015? Article 4, shall the voters of Essex Community Educational Center, Union 46, appropriate to the Capital Replacement Reserve Fund an amount not to exceed 1 percent of the high school budget for capital improvement items contained in the Essex Community Educational Center, Union School District Number 46, capital plan? Article 5, shall the voters of Essex Community Educational Center, Union 46, appropriate $8,582,880 necessary for the support of the Center for Technology Essex for the year beginning July 1st, 2015? Upon closing the polls, the ballot boxes will be sealed, reopened at Park Street School, 21 Park Street in Essex Junction, and the ballots co-mingled and publicly counted by representatives of the Board of Civil Authority and the Town of Essex and the Essex Junction Incorporated School District under the supervision of the Clerk of Essex Community Educational Center, School District, Union School District Number 46. Approve the 16th day of February 2015 by the Essex Community Educational Center, Union School District 46, school directors. Be interesting to do a word cloud of that, because I'm pretty sure it just is all the same words repeated multiple times.
That's a common refrain, but I would agree.
That is the warning as we have this evening. May I have a motion to adopt the warning for signing by the board?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? So at this point in our meeting, we would, if you'd be so kind, Tim, to join us, we have on our agenda an opportunity to have a discussion with you. I guess in twofold, you've had a chance to hear Grant's presentation. If there's any takeaway thoughts or questions you have for us with regards to that, and then it would be really helpful, to the extent obviously possible, for you to kind of give us maybe a bit of a catch-up on what's happening at the committee.
Well, thanks. Thanks for inviting me.
Yeah.
I don't know if you know, I have a stepson still in this high school at the CTE, and just getting a just fantastic education this year, so thank you very much. And I had two daughters, as some of you know, a long time ago, so a lot of history here. And from Grant's presentation, not too much, it's pretty standard. I think the board's done a great job, as usual, to try to balance the needs of the students with trying to keep costs down. I started in the legislature in 2005, being on the education committee, and spent two years there, and now I'm back. I volunteered to go back because I felt that the stars were finally aligned to make some real changes, and we'll see, but I'm pretty encouraged so far. The committee's been looking at a lot of different things. The new Secretary of Education, I was very much in favor of the bill that put the department under the administration as a department. I think there's more accountability there now, and I think we're starting to see what that accountability turns into as the board, the state board, I think is really behind this secretary, and she's got some great ideas and has a lot of support around the state. So some of the things that are in our comprehensive bill come from ideas that she's been working on for a long time. I will say, let me just say briefly, the bill that we've got is in its second iteration. We do hope to get it out in two weeks. That may be ambitious, but we'll see. We've been working closer with the Senate this year, so that we're kind of encouraged that what we do may actually have some legs, and the two bodies may agree. The problems we're working on are obviously huge: affordability, complexity, equity, sustainability, efficiency, flexibility, quality, and leadership. We have a whole bunch of goals listed out in the second iteration of the bill. And I'll get right to kind of the biggies of what we're doing, and the first one I'll say is the one that, it's been great that Grant and Rick Pembroke from Bennington with the business officers have been extremely helpful in helping us to craft. One of the main sections of the bill was just to create unified education districts and move away from the SU model. So it's pretty complex stuff, but I think what we, we've started down that path last year, and it didn't make it through. It turned into kind of a big, big school, small school battle, and then we narrowly passed a bill that was defeated by this, never got through the Senate. So with that in mind, this year, we've tried to create some alternative configurations so that we're not seen to be, we're not trying to mandate the closure of schools. I think there's been some unfortunate language coming from some quarters that some people still take it as that's the purpose of this bill, but it really isn't. And if people, if districts have, or areas have really good alternative arrangements that work better for them and meet the criteria of quality and all that, then I think the board may see that through. Just some of the other things, real briefly. We're shifting to a yield formula for calculating the education tax amount, and this will be, I think, is in the whole realm of simplicity. We won't set, the rate will be set at a dollar for homesteads and $2 for people paying on income, and we won't set that rate each year anymore. So one of the things that does is takes the blame off the legislature for, you know, you raised our taxes. When in fact, always, we've really just been setting a rate that reflects the dollar amount that it'll take to meet what the locals have spent. There is a moratorium in our bill on unfunded mandates, which you'll probably like if that gets through. We recognize that in the past few years, a lot of stuff has been laid on, and over the years, a lot of stuff's been added into the education fund. We haven't figured out a way to take a lot of that stuff out yet. That may happen over time. As you all know, part of the biggest problem is that the property tax, the homestead property tax, has taken the brunt of the decreases in all the other funds coming into the ed There's a whole bunch of different sources, the lottery, and you know all this stuff. But basically, those numbers have not kept anywhere near pace, so it has fallen back. And that's where I think you saw in the last election, kind of a property tax revolt. So as of right now, there's nothing in the bill that's draconian about immediate property tax relief, but I wouldn't be surprised to see, there's a lot of talk about it, I wouldn't be surprised to see something before we're done. Another couple of big items, we're trying to eliminate, another simplicity thing, to eliminate the lag in the income-based calculations and payments, the look back now, which is very confusing for families on how their income sensitivity, but that creates a problem with when you report the homestead, and the calculations on the property assessment date would have to be moved forward, and we don't know if we can do that, but we'll try. And there'll be explicit ballot language about school budget warnings, and ballots will include specific disclosure of per pupil spending, percent change in overall budget amount, which should really make, I think, things a lot more transparent for boards and taxpayers. We're going to restructure the grants to small schools, so this is a contentious item, but both with phantom students and the small school grants, there are some phase-outs and incentives to move into these larger districts, trying to enlarge the districts. A lot of us think that this is actually going to help, in some cases, to preserve the integrity of small schools rather than have the effect of closing them. Not everybody sees it that way. So Grant has been privy to some testimony that we've taken. There's a lot of support in all areas of the budget, particularly in education, to maintain the status quo seemingly at any and all cost. But as I said, I do think there's been some momentum building for real changes this year. Several other things in the bill, there is a study to restructure special ed funding, which we've heard some interesting testimony on that, and I think over time, that could bear some real fruit. There is a proposal to eliminate out of state schools being eligible for Vermont tuitions, which is highly controversial, but the thought is that if we're, because our student numbers have gone down so much that it would be a good idea that the programs are in Vermont, and that kids should be restricted to go to school in Vermont, and that would help with the per pupil counts. There's a section that clarifies roles and responsibility of principals and superintendents, dealing with hiring, and I don't know a lot of the details of that one, and that one's a moving target, too. There's a minor one on reforming the collective bargaining process, and this has been talked about for years, but the possibility of making, the possibility of not striking by having mandatory dispute resolutions. So we'll see if that goes anywhere. That's a big one. That's pretty much, though, universal and integrated accounting and data systems, so a lot being done around providing better data and more comparable data around the state. So that's in a nutshell. You'll see a lot of changes. You can follow it online. There'll be a lot of reports on Vermont Digger almost on a daily basis. We've been, we have one of the smaller rooms in the house, and we've been absolutely, we've had like 30, 40 people at all times, and with people standing outside the door and trying to get in, so it's kind of interesting, because when I was first on the committee, I don't think, except for the members of the School Boards Association and the teachers' unions, you know, pretty much, we didn't have a lot of visitors, but seems to be a lot of interest this year. So I'm encouraged, kind of, it's kind of exciting work, knowing how huge it is. There were a couple of major proposals that other outside groups made, and they'll, some of them are, be somewhat happy, some of them will be very unhappy, because all of their changes to the whole funding system, which this bill doesn't really do at this time, didn't make the cut. But for a small, for a citizen legislator to try to take in these oceans of information and try to get a coherent bill under the timeframes that we're under is difficult stuff. So with that, I'm happy to stop talking and see if there are any immediate questions.
Yeah, that would be great. You know, if we, I'd just suggest that we kind of go in some kind of order, just to provide everybody a chance to have voice for reactions or questions. Aaron?
Thank you for being here, very much. I had a question about, I think it was addressed in the Vermont Digger article that was, you know, when you made your presentation, Grant. Can you address, I think there was something that came up about VHI, and I might not be using the exact language here, but giving districts the ability to negotiate a little bit more on their health insurance costs?
It's not in the bill right now. There has been talk, and I know Al mentioned, you know, I was one of the ones who was very hopeful before the session started that we might actually have some real movement on changing the way we pay for healthcare, but apparently not happening yet. There is a proposal to reduce the Medicaid cost shift, but even that's in a lot of trouble. So, you know, and I can see by watching the presentation that what's driving your costs is healthcare and benefits. So that may get more discussion, but it's, I don't think it's going to be part of this bill. Doesn't mean it can't be part of another one, but...
And the other question I had was just for citizens or people that are watching tonight, or for people that do want to weigh in on this, or possibly, it sounds like you don't have a lot of room in your room, but if someone did want to voice their opinions on any of these topics, or what's the best way for them to go about doing that?
They could either, if they're local, they can call any one of their local reps. At the legislative website, all our numbers are there. On the House Education website, the website was redone this year, and it's really very accessible now, and for the House Education and the Senate Education, we both have websites. Ours has all the testimony that we've taken. We get everything in writing, and it really is easily seen. The speaker earlier in the year called for ideas from both individuals and groups, and we got hundreds of pages of ideas. So there are a lot of ideas out there, and the, right now, I think the best feedback would be to take specific parts of this bill and say, I like this, I don't like this, or here's how to make this piece better.
That's great.
Because it's hard at this point, with a time deadline, to take a whole new giant idea and put it into the bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Jack?
It's more a question for the administration. As this bill was working its way, you know, through the process, I heard Representative German talk about the hiring practice aspect that's shifting, and that caught my attention when I first read it a couple of weeks ago. Is that going to affect our own policies on how we go about interviewing, hiring, if this comes to fruition, or are we in compliance with what this law may, or this bill may be addressing?
Well, the bill makes changes to the superintendent's and principals' authority to nominate, hire, and fire staff by giving principals the responsibility to do the nominating, hiring, and firing at the district level, and school-level employees, which often we do in consultation anyway. Often, a nomination's brought forth, like tonight, for hiring. If there's ever a situation where we're involved in having to fire staff, again, we work very closely, so I think that may, I think that work, it'll be easy for us to be in compliance with the way the law is being designed.
As a board member, I was, I didn't want to see perhaps the bill go in one direction, and we're parked in a different place, and that would cause a lot of board work in the future to try and reconcile what our policies and procedures are to be in compliance with what we're at.
It would be fine.
So, okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Thanks for coming. I have, you know, I've been on this board a long time, I've been in the community a long time. I've watched what happens in the state over these years. And one thing that's clear to me is the population, the aging population in the state is increasing. The ability of that population group to generate more revenue to the state appears to me to be declining, and I'm not sure, but I... be declining, and I'm not sure, but I kind of got a feeling that the 110 million may not be the number. I'm very concerned about that. That aside, when I look on the other side about these caps, if there's a $1 cap or a $2 cap, it sounds to me like the state is putting a stake in the ground, and this is our...
No, that piece isn't a cap.
It isn't a cap.
No, no. It's simply saying, here's what, if the rate is a dollar, here's how much money will be raised.
Okay.
And if local communities want to go above that, it'll be easier just to see that.
Sure, okay.
So, that isn't to say there wouldn't be some caps potentially discussed. One, an idea on the table is to provide immediate property tax relief, and to tell voters, "We heard you," is to say for one year or two years, to just say, "This is the money you have to spend." I don't think that'll be a very popular idea to have Montpelier tell local communities what they can do. But I totally agree with your first thing, it's not just in education, but
Right.
the demographics are just horrible.
They're going the wrong way.
And, you know, we are a little bit buffered here. I mean, I looked at those numbers, and they've been the same for years, and I think, boy, are we lucky that, you know, the carnage in some of these schools, we heard a case the other day where there's a school that has one student in one grade and one student in another grade, and, you know, at what point does it just not become viable? And for, you know, hundreds of years, these schools have been the hearts of their communities, and there's some really significant decisions that have to be made in the next few years.
One of the other things is our costs are continuing to increase, and we can't look at just this year, we have to be looking ahead. Health insurance this year, 4.5, next go-around might be closer to 10. So, this is more of an abnormal situation with the 4.5 than what us as individuals are currently paying and seeing for increases. That, unfunded mandates, the cost of energy, everything else is going up as well. When I talked with Rebecca, the Secretary of Education, Rebecca Holcomb, about what, where are we, and what are we, where are we today? It appeared to me, I'd like your feedback on this, it appeared to me that a lot of the more efficient schools and the tax rates are really funding the, those areas of the state that have issues with smaller schools, that there's a sort of a cost shift that's going on. And one of the things that she shared was that in smaller communities, it's really hard to cut back on staff, to get that teacher-student ratio. Can you share with us anything about that, and what might be done in those areas?
I think part of that's true, and I think that's part of the reason for doing this district thing, is, you know, the idea is that if you have a very small school, but it's geographically isolated or something, if you're in a larger district, maybe you can send a French teacher there two days a week. I mean, you know, something like that, where you can, the community can figure out locally what works for them and do better. There's not, in the big picture, there's not that much money in the small schools. I mean, the grants are like 7.5 million, something like that, and so yes, it's a subsidy that everybody else is providing. The small schools will look at us and say, "You're the ones that are driving the cost. Look at, look at all your offerings, and, you know, you could do a lot, a lot less." And my answer is, "But look what we're getting," you know, "and isn't this about opportunities for students?" So, you can argue this many ways, and a lot of people do argue from their own particular, you know, district or school thing, but that's what, I do see the chance for the department and for kind of a longer-term solutions with these enlarged districts, is that it's going to provide better opportunities. And if we do nothing, some schools are going to close, they're just not going to have the students. I mean, there's five high schools in central Vermont that are graduating 60 kids in total this year, 12 apiece on average. That's, how long can you sustain that? So, but I mean, it, obviously, the impacts on the economy are fantastic and not positive, that our population seems to stay the same statewide, but is just so dramatically getting older.
Thank you.
Gary?
No, I don't have any questions, but we'll echo what my colleagues have said, and I appreciate you coming here and talking to us.
Tim, I, you know, I think it's, it's always going to receive the round of applause when we talk about some kind of moratorium on unfunded mandates. The problem that I see is that many of these mandates are the right things to do.
And I have voted for a lot of them.
Yeah.
And I'm guilty.
And it's, it's one of the ways that we move the entire educational system across the state in one, in one way. Because our students don't live in the same community always for their entire, you know, pre-K through vocational education. So inconsistencies from communities, whether the adults choose to be inconsistent or not, don't always serve the learner. And so, what I fear is that we applaud ourselves from, you know, stopping all unfunded mandates and not recognize that we need to work to be funding some of these mandates. They need to come along, because we need to change our educational system, and sometimes in ways that are systemic. So, it's, it's a, it's a battle, it has a nice cry right now, but, you know, it's not that we can stop improving our system.
No, and I think of, I'm on the State College Board, and, you know, I look at some of the initiatives with the Early College and Dual Enrollment, which is fantastic programs like we have here at the Tech Center, and, you know, this is just in the last few years, but there's still big questions about who's going to pay for that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, some of that came out of the Ed Fund, and it's not, it's not on a large, expandable, sustainable track yet, and yet, if you think about, instead of K through 12, P through 16 or 20, which is breaking down some of these barriers, doing more virtual-type stuff, I mean, the world of education is changing really rapidly.
Really rapidly.
And I remember, what was, was it two or, it's probably five years ago, but the big meeting we had here in Essex, and you showed that, how fast things are changing, that movie, it was just stunning. And so, you know, we tried to keep ahead of it as much as we can, but, you know, I...
Well, I think you're absolutely right. The other element is that, that part, just Dual Enrollment's a great one, where we started saying, "Well, this isn't really sustainable for the Ed Fund to pay for it. We want to keep it, and we'll just have it so that it transitions into the local communities." What has, that, that's sort of hollowing or kind of starving of the Ed Fund from previous general fund transfers and other transfers that went in, and even the talk of a new lottery not feeding the Ed Fund, but feeding other purposes? I guess what I'm saying is that there has been an inflicted nature to the pressure that school budgets are enjoying right now, is because we've, we've moved money that was previously determined, dedicated, and earmarked for the Ed Fund, we've moved that out, and then we said, "Look, education keeps raising our property taxes." Well, some of that's been somewhat inflicted.
Yes, it has. Guilty, you know, but again, for, you know, for many good reasons, I think. I mean, I can think of a whole bunch of mandates that have come down that are just things that either needed to be done, you know, the whole bullying legislation, there's a lot of things, but they do have cost to them.
Yeah, right.
So, and take teachers' retirement. I mean, there's been several moves to take that out of the general fund and put that into the education fund, and that was the cause of a gubernatorial veto a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
If you remember. So, you know, how much can the Ed Fund stand, and how much can the property tax stand when all the other parts of that formula aren't performing? So, I, long and short of it is, you know, I think we can't continue to do business as usual, even here, when our numbers are up, we really, to Al's point, we've got to start thinking about this, because some of these increases, we don't have a handle on them yet, and it's like our state budget. I mean, we have it, this is by far the worst we've ever faced, and we got $18 million hole after the budget was already come from the administration, and we have, as yet, we'll find out this week a little more, but, you know, no, no idea is really how to deal with that. So, we'll do it, but it's going to be harsh, and there's going to be a lot of cuts, and when we're structurally spending at a, say, a 5% rate and taking in 2% or 3%, it's obvious that that's not going to last
Right.
over time.
Well, and that, I think that brings me up to my, my last point, is that, I mean, maybe every school district feels this, maybe this is sort of the view of your backyard, but, you know, the high school budget, and you can see the Tech Center's budgets, has been incredibly moderated as far as the pass-along on tuition. I think we're up now for four years, averaging 2.5%?
For education spending?
Yeah, for the, for the high school. You know, so I think we, we've been responsible, we haven't seen any kind of, you know, huge decline in those four years of our student population, but our local community and our voters and our taxpayers are bombarded by, you know, that education, it's a spending problem, and that schools are out of control, and that, you know, so, so what, it's, it seems like it's hard to get the message out, that we got the message. You know, there are people that still need to get the message somewhere out there, but we have been really trying to be responsible, and, but our voters don't get to, they don't, they don't ever get to enjoy that message.
So, I think we're trying to peck away at that in this bill by having, you know, there's such a disconnect now between what the budget is, you know, when a budget is voted in a town, and it's a 1% increase, and you get a 20% tax increase, nobody understands that, they, you know, and they're going to blame whoever, they're just going to be angry about that tax increase. So, you know, I think we're trying to get at some of that, so, to make that a little more
Yeah.
transparent, but it's, again, when you have a system, and we're not changing this, that it's based on how many bodies you have, and I think there is some impetus to look at the waitings a little bit, because are they still as, where they should be?
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, big problem. And I, I don't think anybody in the legislature now is blaming profligate spending on school boards, but you can't say that spending isn't a problem.
Yeah.
You know, in general, when obviously it is. It's the same thing at the state level, well, our revenues are way down, so you can say that we have a spending problem, but we have a revenue problem, and that's, I think it's in every state that the battle rages about whether you try to raise more revenue to make up for that which you've lost, or you just cut on the expenditure side to match whatever that is.
Yeah.
And, you know, I would just add, Tim, that, you know, I, I think that, I mean, I agree with Brian, you know, I do think that the state does an amazing job of, you know, when we talk about the mandate, I mean, I, we want to do the right thing, we want to continue to be innovative and do what is best for students, but sometimes I just feel like, it's like, almost like trying to build a car, and we're like, we don't have the wheels, you know, like, we have all these great components, but I feel like, until we can address things like giving districts the ability to, you know, when we talk about things like V-HI, or, you know, when we talk about these, the core, the underlying, you know, the property tax issues, the funding issues, and the healthcare costs, I kind of just feel like, if we just don't fix those things, if those cannot be a top priority of the legislature, getting some serious things done in those areas, I feel like, there's almost just like, there's just only so much that we're going to be able to do.
I agree.
You know?
And I think healthcare is so much a part of that, and as the Governor has said many times, to do nothing is totally unsustainable, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. I was going to share one additional comment that I've heard from the public. People that are on fixed income are concerned about the income sensitivity changes, and they're very sensitive to that, because a number of these people just don't have the income to be able to pay for this, so I just wanted to pass that along. That is a hardship for a number of our mothers.
Yeah, and there was an interesting proposal about, that hasn't gotten in the bill yet, but it, to eliminate, there's kind of a cliff right now if you're up in that top area, and to maybe change differentiated rates nearer the top, so that, to make it a little more stretched out. So, but, yeah, I don't think there's any idea of taking away the income sensitivity. There are proposals on the table to move more toward income in general. They haven't gotten a real hard look, and I started this one with a group in 2007, and then the recession hit, and the one beautiful thing about the property tax is it's enormously stable as compared to the income tax, and, you know, when income statewide starts fluctuating greatly, then, and you're at the vagaries, and you, you can't look to the legislature to make up through the general fund the difference, that hasn't worked. So, you know, we'd be right back to the foundation formula, and we're very mindful of the Brigham Case as we deliberate for those kind of changes.
I know from my own, from my own perspective, to the people that live on the street, it's pretty easy to move out of state, and more and more of them are doing it.
Well, that's the other thing, I, I think, I think it's real, and I do think we need to worry about that. I mean, there's a whole cadre of voices to say, "Just raise marginal income, raise it at the top," and you have some pretty influential people saying, "No, people are already, people are mobile in this society, and if you, you know, they're willing to pay more to live in Vermont."
Right.
You have to, but at some point, you just, you know, Florida and Texas start looking a lot cheaper.
Warmer.
And warmer, really?
And they are cheaper. They are a lot cheaper.
Well, that's the problem with having a state with 600,000, 20,000 people.
Let me give a chance to add men as well, please.
Thank you, Brian. Tim, I was happy to see in the second iteration of your bill, some talk about a common financial and student data system. I think, and as you're well aware, as our supervisory union and Essex Town talk about creating a regional education district, and they formed a study committee, and their first meeting is March 4th, on Wednesday, that 20-member study committee, like several, I hope, in the state, begin considering a new governance structure. And the reason why I mention the student data system and the finance system as, is once our governance structures become more common and standardized, it's really important for us to have systems that are in place. It's sort of like the wheels on the car that Erin talked about. Without those common systems mandates, such as personalized learning plans, where we're looking at systems to manage that moving forward, because something I want legislators to know is the mobility rate of our, of our student population right now is increasing. We have, at a time when there used to be a lot more mobility rate at the high school level, we're seeing three to five moves of students at the elementary level per year now.
Well, let me ask you, is that, because what I noticed in the Village, just in the past five, 10 years, the proliferation of rental housing here is just
Right.
enormous. I mean, there's been almost no growth in even condominiums, and it's all been, you know, there's this huge pent-up demand, because people can't afford right now to buy houses, so I assume that is feeding
Right.
this, this mobility, because you may stay in a place for six months or a year, and then...
And then move on, and for educating our children as a transition from one system to another system throughout the state, without common systems of tracking and sharing information, it makes it certainly concerning for K-12 educational
Yeah, really important.
progress for students to carry through some kind of sustained programming, and especially now that we have a common core state standards and next-gen science standards, we need a way to record information that's standardized for students to allow us to meet that transient population needs, as well as all students. As we move to proficiency-based education requirements, we need a common way to track that information, and as schools are inventing their own graduation standards based on proficiencies, we, again, are recreating things by localities instead of having statewide direction. And Rebecca Holcomb came and spoke to the regional superintendents in the Champlain Valley on Friday, along with all the, all the curriculum directors... the curriculum directors and special ed directors. And there's a cry for those systemic needs that we have for those systems. So I hope as you move forward with this bill that you, there'll be many educators and administrators interested in helping to inform any committee work that moves forward so that we can have some common standardized systems in place where you really can have some comparables as we're creating governance structures that are more similar. The more comparables we have moving forward, the easier it'll be to track and understand student growth and progress over time. So thank you for considering that as you move forward.
Definitely. The one thing I didn't mention was that is not in the bill, and we took some testimony on this. And I think Grant, in your testimony, you had talked about that one of the ways to save money is, is to deal with the student-teacher ratios with some kind of mandate out of Montpelier. And I think as we took testimony, it just got harder and harder to see how that would, could be addicted from Montpelier in the sense of there's so many different configurations around the state and sharing and, and that it would be, you know, that even if you did something like that, people would either figure out just a way around it or how to. So just, I don't know how you feel about that because, I mean, some of us are saying, oh, that's low-hanging fruit, you know, just raise that up and it's, there's a lot of money to be saved there. But so far, we haven't found a good way to, to do that.
Want to respond to that?
No, I think, as long as you're going by like classroom teacher to student or student to classroom teacher ratios, I think that may be data that you can get. If you were looking at just total staff, I think that would be tricky because like we talk about CTE Essex Junction School District, they get support from employees that are, that are U-46 employees. So that gets a little mucky. But I think if it was student to classroom teacher ratios, I think AOE has some of that data and there might be a way to tackle that, but it, it may be a little.
Yeah.
Far down the road.
And we hear anecdotally all the time that there's too many adults in the schools. That, that's a commonly held value, but when you start to take it apart and say, well, it's not teachers, it's aides and it's special ed and it's cafeteria workers and security and everything else. But you say, okay, which one of those don't you want to do, you know? And that's something I in Montpelier particularly feel like it's any of my business to tell all of you how to run the school efficiently.
There was legislation that asked us to create class size policies and, and procedures and we, I, someone from the House recently requested our policy and procedures, which I forwarded, I think on Thursday or Friday. And, and I can see, it's back to my original statement about there's the same configuration of a central office, there's the same configuration of a K-12 system throughout the state. And because we have no similar configurations, it's so difficult to do any kind of comparisons, whether it's class size or anything else. So I never thought I'd come to the point in time where I'd say standardization. Standard is good and it is good when it comes to a model, whether it be a governance model. And, and I think the spirit and intent of this bill, if I'm understanding it correctly, is to create pre-K through 12 slash tech districts that can offer that experience over time for its students. And as we know, students are jumping. Having that system in place at least ensures some semblance of quality.
And I was encouraged to see the study committee be oversubscribed. I mean, that, that's not a usual thing in, in recent times about citizens, citizens still care in this community and still want to be involved in that. So I'm kind of excited. I'm glad that we're moving ahead with that, definitely.
Tim, just one kind of, something that's not in the bill or addressed in the bill, but statewide school choice. Is there any more discussion about the possibility of having ADM follow kids?
Yes. It's not in this bill now. I'm guessing there's going to, there's a separate, there's a school choice caucus even meeting in the House. I haven't seen the proposals, but I, I think there's going to be other proposals coming forth based on that.
Because I, I think that, that really limits what some schools are opening up as far as receiving or sending, you know, I think the capacity limits might be a little bigger if, if the ADM was following because it's, I mean, there's not really a, a good reason to bring in or accept a lot of kids from statewide school choice if you're not getting the tuition dollars and you're not getting the ADMs.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, there's a financial disincentive to serve the needs of students.
Yeah. One last point, just quick follow-up on both Judy and your point. One of the concerns I've had in looking at the merger of units and communities is the issue of separate planning commissions in each community. And like you see, the $800 apartments and block and just huge developments of block, low-cost housing has to have a horrendous impact on the school system in that community. But we're dealing on this red with three communities and really little or no control over what that community decides.
It's something Judy mentioned before and that this will be a much larger discussion, but the definition of local has to change and it is changing. And I think that's what you're getting to.
Yes.
You know, we have the village, you're doing one thing, the town doing another thing.
Doing something else.
And it's the same thing with schools. I, you know.
Yeah.
People just don't shop in Essex Junction. I mean, you, we have a much bigger countywide sort of structure there. So that's.
That's a big issue.
That's what's changing.
It's, yeah.
I think it's, there's a, there's the same as when it's easy to envision what happens inside this school and inside the tech center based off of your past experience, you know, of what happens in schools. I think that people have to understand that, I mean, we know that there has been a shift of human social services into the school because it can. But it, it also is a place that has, I mean, I think this, this high school, this, this community is much more economically diverse than it was at one time. There's probably more foreign languages spoken in this school as a first language than there had been before. You know, so, you know, these are things that like, why are there so many adults? Well, you didn't need to have, you know, 20 ELO. You, you didn't, when you didn't want to be inclusive and bring students in and try to find them the opportunity to succeed, you didn't need all the assistance. I mean, we're, you know, so it, it is that perspective of like when I was in school is, is, is not fully informed to what the challenges are, at least in our community here, maybe through Chittenden County. But I think it's really everywhere that the challenges are a little bit different. And maybe everyone always feels this, the challenges today are harder than they've ever been. But maybe that's a, maybe that's a mantra that's been spoken ever since time began. But it does seem quite difficult to meet all the needs that the school is trying to meet.
Yeah. You raised, we haven't even talked about the whole social, human services coming into the schools. And I, I think over time, there's going to be a lot more impetus to just get rid of some of the social services out of the schools and just move them into the schools where the people are. So.
I think that's something that would really help us too is also if we could hear, I don't know whether it's the legislature or maybe if it should be directed more at the governor, but I think having the state also focus some of its energies on actual revenue generation. So, you know, when you start talking about, you know, finding ways to have, you know, like leveraging the amazing tech schools we have, the educational quality and making the state more attractive for actual tax-paying corporations, you know, we're so lucky.
Oh, no questions.
In this town, you know, we have had a lot of job generation, unfortunately not paying tax job generation, a lot of it, but they're great jobs nonetheless. But I mean, I think we, that would really help too because then we could also, wouldn't it be great to be having a conversation, not always have to talk about resources decreasing, but it would be nice if the state could focus on that.
Well, and if you had somebody from commerce here, they would tell you, you know, and I've been in negotiations with global foundations and, you know, so I mean, I think there's some really good things happening there, but.
But that's, but you know, we always kind of end up talking about that, which is so crucial and important, especially to our community. But I think also statewide, you know, if we could just.
Yeah.
Make that, and I don't know if that's more of a commerce or more.
Gets back to demographic. It is, but it, it's hard when you tell an employer to come here. Right now, we've got plenty of jobs. We've just got a tremendous mismatch of jobs.
Right.
That can't, you know, I look at our school of ETC, we've got, you know, 98% placement rate and we can't fill.
Right.
The classes because the kids don't have the math skills coming in and there's not enough of them.
Right.
So we have a whole bunch of challenges like that, but we still will always be, I think, a magnet for certain companies and certain young, I mean, talk to the entrepreneurs in Chittenden County and its quality of life that we have that a lot of other places don't have. So, but it comes along with high taxes and other challenges.
Tim, this has been fantastic. I really appreciate you taking more time to come, but I think that, you know, we had, we had been debating for a while to figure out a way to have such a conversation. Our previous model was in some type of dessert or so, but I think this is much more substantive. It's much more of an opportunity to exchange.
We like desserts though, too.
Yeah, we could just, we could just add desserts to this. But I really appreciate it.
Well, thanks. And as we go forward, I know Grant's paying a lot of attention, Judy's going to pay attention. So get comments and it's fluid and anything can happen. Kind of exciting.
This is really helpful.
Yeah.
Good.
Thanks for your work.
Okay. So we still remain seven minutes ahead of the agenda and move on to principal reports. So I'll ask you guys to add anything that's not included in your report and then highlight something that you'd like to make sure the board and our viewing public have a chance to hear. Bob, do you want to start us off?
Sure. So in the report, I had mentioned that we were doing our open house on February 7th, very successful. We have expanded the number of middle school workshops that we've been doing. We had almost 70 students show up, 70 middle school students show up for workshops in eight different program areas. And even better, about 30 parents stayed for an informational setting, where informational meeting, we talked about what it's like to access the tech center and use it as a resource in the community. One thing that wasn't included in my report is that for the first time this year, we will, first time this year, we will be doing the district-wide fine arts night. CTE students will be representing their artwork. So I hope you had a chance to look at the poster that was in your, the minutes from my principal's report. That was an award-winning poster for Entrepreneurship Week that was done by a student from Graphic Design and Digital Publishing. It's the third time in five years we've won that award. So we're pretty proud about that. And the last thing I would say is I know I mentioned it in my report, but just want to point out that Lynn Vera is being recognized on a national level. This April, she's being recognized for a lifetime achievement award through the National Alliance for Partnership and Equity. And it's, it's quite an honor and we're very lucky to have her working at CTE. So if you see her or get a chance to mention it to her, definitely congratulate her. And MMU is up 20 to 16 at the half.
Thanks. Rob, same. Is anything that's not in there and any highlights that you want to make sure we don't?
Yeah, a couple of things. One of the things I said I'd give you an update on, just very preliminary numbers in terms of course failures. The key indicator is not attendance as what is perhaps watercooler thought. It appears that 63%, excuse me, of our students who have had a course failure or failures, the number one factor is reading two or more levels below grade level. So in other words, sophomores, it would be two or, two or more levels below sophomore reading level. So we're going to tease that out and have more information for the March meeting, but that was just preliminary data that we've compiled so far. I start my senior failure meetings with seniors who've had a course failure. Parent or guardian and counselor starting next week, and that'll run through the first few weeks of March. I've been doing that for four or five years, just to make sure that there's a plan in place to focus and get them to June 13th, graduation date, make sure they're there. In terms of our eighth grade visits in, at the, at the high school, we had ADL on the 29th, EMS on the 30th, and we had to reschedule the tuition students February 2nd because it was a snow day. They're going to be coming March 5th. Junior ROTC, they had their last winter ball. I was asked to be a guest speaker. Was pleased to be there. And I'll have more information on the more formal decommission ceremony for all the board when we get closer to that point. That will be coming. School choice, deadline is March 1st. Not a whole lot of movement. We're, I think, two, maybe three, under the 20 cap. I think I've got two applications so far, one of which were a third choice, not a first or second choice. I've got two requests going out so far. And lastly, interesting that the point was brought up earlier tonight on hiring practices. We are fast and furiously in the interviewing mode and we have some outstanding candidates for mathematics, alternative education, teacher, EST coordinator and school counseling position and choral director. Those are the ones that we've, are underway and the rest are like on the front burner. But we wanted to get them out early and often. We, we've really attracted some solid candidates. So to give you an idea with math, we posted for two full-time positions, December 19th, we had 26 applicants. We interviewed eight, some a second round and they're solid. So I feel we're, certainly we're, we're losing very talented staff members, but I'm very impressed and pleased with the applicant pool so far. That's, that's what I have.
Did you want, to review the graduation rate?
Explanation.
Explanation you requested. Do you think it's enough?
Yeah, there, there wasn't any questions that I had from it. I did have one question that just came to me on Saturday when I was here in school. The competitive giving posters that are around, they look fantastic. They look incredibly professional. Is that, who, where did those come from? The ones that are photoshopped with our athletes?
Yeah, I know.
With food items and stuff?
I'm not sure who the creator of those were.
Yeah. Just.
They take credit, but I can't.
I mean, they're even printed. They're, they're quite exceptional.
They are.
What is the graduation?
Yeah, exactly. With the Photoshop of the laundry detergent in his hand is just really professional-looking poster.
What is the graduation date?
June 13th.
June 13th.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing I just noticed, so the Teacher Appreciation Week.
Oh, yeah.
You set, set the date will be, so it's going to be the week of May 4th?
Yes.
And then you were suggesting, so we'll just make a mental note of this, the, maybe the 7th or the 8th?
Yeah, it's usually, that seems to work. Bob and I have been in conversations, student governments, you know, they're, they're ready to go on that. So.
Okay, that's great.
I didn't, did anyone have any questions for Bob? Okay. Bob, I think has drawn the short straw and will be working with us in executive session later in the meeting, but I guess you probably want, you probably want to go through budget communications?
Yeah, I was, I was going to stick, stick here through that. Yeah.
Okay. That's where your highlighter is?
That's where my highlighter is.
Yeah.
Correct.
So our next agenda topic is budget and community communications. To, in, in the org notes, it talked about that there was, there has been some work done so far on getting some different kind of prototypes together. These are the same, right?
They're the same, just a dummy draft. They're the same, just a dummy draft.
And what, I, I think there's, there's sort of like one primary task here, and that is to look for a key point person, a board member, to push the postcard over the top as far as giving feedback, and we sort of grant that individual our, our authority to get that out. There's a decision to be made by the board on whether we want to put information on that postcard that is talking about vacancies, board vacancies. We have two of them, one in the town and one in the junction. If we want to do that, then the timeline's relatively short to get this postcard out. So with that, is there anybody that would like to be that point person to work pretty much probably this week on this project with administration?
I can do that.
Great. So-
Thank you, Erin.
Erin will be that point person, and what do people feel will work on just a consensus, a feel of the board on putting vacancy information on the postcard to try to see if we can communicate that there's two openings?
I think there'd be more interest in the tax increase than the vacancies.
Yeah, I guess I was looking to add, I was, so we, is that, we want to add the tax increase?
I, I really think we should, that it's, and that it's being driven by state property tax increases.
So, and, you want to, you'd like to see the-
I think it's informative that-
Add the tax?
That we've got a responsible budget here, but the ta, the, the tax, the real tax increase will be higher due to the statewide property tax.
The number's worth half, right?
Or some such words to that effect.
Half the impact is because of that two cent increase.
Exactly, you know, and, and that's, that's being transparent in my mind, that, you know, no surprises here. I don't want to create a problem, but I don't want to leave out critical information either.
I think the only concern about moving ahead with vacancies included in the postcard is the timing of when a postcard would have to be released.
I thought, it's not even just the timing so much, as I just feel like the purpose of this really is to speak to-
I did.
I, I liked what was in our org notes that you had put together, which was that-
Nice letter.
-piece about, and I was actually going to ask tonight-
Your community needs you this year.
Yeah. Were you, did you do that envisioning maybe having that be in, like, the Essex Reporter or on-
It was in the Essex Reporter, sorry.
I didn't read it this week, excuse me. So, now we, can that also, could that also go on like a front porch forum too, or did you already do that too?
Hasn't been on a front porch forum yet.
Because I think that, I thought that was a great piece, so, you know what I mean? I guess I just felt like this is kind of like really got a dedicated purpose, and I feel like if we tried, it's just nice.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just try to bring us around, so I'm hearing sort of no on the vacancy.
Right.
I'm a no on the vacancy, no.
No.
Okay, so that's, we'll, we'll have that off the postcard, so now the postcard is in your hands with that feedback?
Is there anything else that anybody, like, we should put your, so we, it sounds like we all agree that we should address something on here about-
Tax rate increase.
-the increase and kind of where that's primarily coming from.
And what's driving it.
What's driving it? Is, is there anything else that anyone thinks?
I mean, I, I think if there is room, or my, not only the tax increase and why, but also that we're still under what the statewide is, so there's still that relative, you know, this is a pretty good budget. Now, again, if something has to be left off, I think it's more important to have the increase and why. If there is room to say, you know, this is-
Running-
You know, comparison, that we're still running under statewide.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
But it is a postcard.
Right.
And, and I just want to say, keep, keep it simple.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think we want to get down into-
No, no, no.
-six-point font, because we've got so much information on such a small space, right?
I agree.
We've got to keep it simple, keep it on point, recognize the limitations of this medium of the postcard and what we're trying to do. So, I think you've got a bit of a challenge, you, Erin, and administration, to make sure that, keep it simple, keep it short.
And then on-
Vote on April, you know, vote on April fourth or whatever.
I also thought that was a great piece, Judy, that you put together for the Essex Reporter, is the board comfortable with asking, because I think Ben has the logins for all the, the four or five-
Oh, the front porch forum?
Front porch forums?
Mm-hmm.
Are, is the board comfortable in asking administration to post that letter in front page forums?
Yes.
I think that would be great.
I think that's also a great place, people that read front page forum are going to have a possible inclination towards it.
Yeah.
Has there been any, any, anyone coming, no movement yet on anyone coming forward?
No one has picked up a petition from Essex Junction to serve on the board. One person has picked up a petition for Essex Junction Prudential.
Okay.
Some good-
Two vacancies there as well.
Okay.
So, you know, anything anyone can say or do and reach out to people, I think oftentimes it's that personal connection where you just say to somebody, hey, you know, we have a couple openings, it's such an important role, and, and you really do make a huge difference in allocating resources and following policies and creating, you know, opportunities for students. So, anything that any of us can do to reach out to folks.
I think a separate, I, I would suggest a separate little bullet, something that stands out by itself for that.
Well, I think Lynette puts an ad in-
She didn't add the week before my piece.
Okay.
So, each week, we've had a piece going in to conjure support every week. You know, and I think that, like hers just announced the fact that March ninth is the deadline to pick up your petitions, if you're considering running for a school board position. So, you're only talking about, you know, about two weeks, so anything we can do to conjure up support, and I'll ask Ben to put it on front porch forum, so we'll have that follow-up communication.
Does the central office have Facebook? I'm just thinking someplace that it could-
We're talking about it. It is posted on our website under News and Announcements right now.
Okay, so it can be shared, it can be shared on Facebook there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
A question on the front porch forum.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is it the CC, the, the, I've heard five front porch forums, and I think those are all Essex Junction ones. What about in the Essex Town front porch forums also?
I've spoken with Mark Andrews, and he's very aware that we need, that we have an open seat, and he's working with his board to-
And I've been in touch with their chair, and they've got some people that are trying to decide whether they want to talk more about it.
Mm-hmm.
All right. But just sometimes I know-
We have-
We, we, we look at CCSU, and that's what we do, but not forgetting about our Essex Town brethren.
Not at all.
For this particular board, right?
So, anything else on that topic?
What is the deadline for this, you need this from, a completed piece from me by the end of the week, is what we're saying, by Friday?
Well, if you're not including a school board seat on that, I don't feel as much pressure.
Okay.
I know Grant and Ben have talked about sort of the timeliness of getting that as a good reminder to come out to vote, so not getting it out too, too early, but, you know, and-
The, I, I think we definitely want to do it after the traditional town meeting day happens with other districts, but I don't know that we want to wait too much longer than that, because then if the legislature changes any kind of rates, then that's going to put us out of sync with other information that's been out, so.
Which is what happened last year with the tax rate piece.
So, it seems like you've got a couple weeks to work on it, and then you can drive the final deadline down with administration, with Ben and Grant.
First week of March, Erin.
Great. So, that concludes our budget talk.
And my highlights.
And your highlights. Grant, thank you so much for all your time.
Yes.
Thank you very much, it's always a pleasure.
It's a, it's a lot of nights.
Incredible work over the last three months.
And, Rob, you're always welcome to continue to join us, but if there's anything of pressing nature-
I don't know, if we make the first quarter or not.
But thank you very much for your, for your work and for coming out tonight.
You're welcome.
Task team updates. So, this is a, we don't, I'm going to skip over communication because it seems like we continue to have that, the same talk about that. So, policy?
Yeah, we meet again Wednesday, as has been the case since October. We have failed to make the quorum because we're not getting proper representation from all board members. I will put in there that has not been a U forty-six problem.
Yeah.
But, so, we, we actually accomplished something, just on our own, Vince, was that the gentleman's name?
Yep.
Vince talked to us quite a bit about the website that they've been created, looking better and better every day, and they're really doing a great job.
I, I think it really is.
Yeah, and we're incorporating kind of, we're still trying to get the point of willing in the policy into that kind of format, so that's, just, I know as a parent here, I've been frustrated looking for something specifically, I just kind of give up.
Yeah.
So I think, so we are moving on something, it'd be nice, we can't make any decisions until we get all board members present, but we have like things lined up, what we want to do. One of the things that was noticed, and it hasn't been noticed before, is I think, I forget the exact count, we have twenty-four policies that has not been updated since nineteen nineties. Obviously, that's what I would like addressed first. Some of them may not even be relevant, but that's a quick sweep, right? Just get rid of them, but we can't do that until we get the proper numbers, and so I think we'll start there, then anything comes in, you know, priority-wise, we can certainly shift to, but, so that's where we're at. We're hoping that message gets out that, you know, these meetings are important, we need you up.
I'm concerned, I don't think you have representation from all boards on this, this Wednesday either.
Okay.
No, it was canceled.
Oh, was, I, last other group was-
It's just-
Just got canceled today for that reason.
Okay, I haven't looked today. Wow, this is not good for my chairmanship, since I've become chair, we haven't had a damn meeting. Don't worry, that's telling me.
That is, that is interesting.
It's a bad correlation.
Just don't take it personally.
The resignation letter is here.
Or CCSU, like, just kind of saying what the other heads of the other boards, just sort of saying what's sort of going on with this, or-
Executive Committee.
Executive Committee.
Yeah, I think it's, it's really one, if not all, of those, because we're a little fortunate right now, I mean, if we were in the middle of the wellness policy that had a federal deadline to it, because this is, this is the, we've been able to do work, you know, when Gary and I show up, we can do work, but nothing can, no action can be taken. So, it's a, it's a real problem. We've been a little fortunate, but that's just because we've grown accustomed to not reviewing some of these policies, and we need to do that. But it definitely, it, it needs to be addressed. Okay, and the last one is Leaders at Work.
Which is tomorrow night.
Yes.
It says March eleventh, and that's the meeting after the meeting, but we rescheduled our February meeting for tomorrow night. And that, at that meeting, I'm presenting a draft of the twenty sixteen, fifteen, sixteen annual work plan the Leaders at Work Committee have asked me to bring forward, that which will be continuing, that which will be completed, and that which will be new, as suggestions for that committee.
You'll be incorporating our work from this evening.
Correct. All of it.
Yeah, I've been looking at it.
Yeah, me too.
But I can't make that meeting.
Tomorrow night.
And we had an established schedule, but when board members come back and want to have it switched, I had a-
It's hard.
-previous commitment to my grandson to attend his basketball game, and it's like, oh my God, you know, I've postponed and delayed this, and then had game and this game, and I said, you know, I just got to do this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. At one time, we had talked about task teams, like, instead of meeting monthly, like the second Tuesday of the month, maybe chunking their work.
Communications.
We did do that.
We did that two years ago or something?
And I think-
Instead of doing every month, I-
I think that helps the capacity of board members, because once you get into budget season-
Yeah.
-and your multiple sessions, I think that-
Right.
-that makes it really hard for your capacity, and maybe that's a structure to revisit.
Yeah.
I think what was nice about it, too, was that because there was less lag time between each meeting, having like the, you know, four or six a little more clustered, that your train of thought, you know, from meeting to meeting was a little, I think it flowed a little better, it was like fresher in your mind.
Yeah. Well, I think the task teams have, you know, continue to have attention needed on them for attendance-wise, charter-wise, all that kind of stuff, so, work to be done.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on testing?
Was there anything from Leaders at Work, Ben, coming, any reporting out of the next meeting tomorrow?
I think we actually-
There you go.
I think we've actually met and reported out on the last meeting-
Right.
Because the last meeting was canceled, so I think-
So, nothing new?
Yeah, nothing new, and we meet tomorrow night.
But that's, the, going over the work plan is a work in progress.
Mm-hmm.
But these are, the, the updates are color-coded.
And then the CCSU board is coming up.
You can have that copy.
I've been working on the agenda for it.
Okay, so March thirtieth is the next CCSU?
Yep. And that will have a various set of agenda topics, but one of them will be the final approval of the budget, because it will be post all the other budget actions.
Do those usually, where do those usually happen?
Your, your meeting isn't until April.
That's right. What do we do in March?
In March, we're going to do, ask for permission for issuance of contracts, reps.
Do those usually happen here or at Park Street?
Annual work plan.
Park, well, they-
Well, they have been at Park Street, but we're in the process of transitioning to the high school and/or to Maple Street-
Okay.
-because EJRP is having a second preschool program-
Oh.
-at Park Street next year, so that's going to begin in June.
Okay.
That restructuring, so we're trying to norm probably here at the high school.
And are those a six-thirty meeting as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Ben has been sending out kind of weekly notices.
That is great.
Is that how, I wanted some feedback, that's helpful.
That is really great.
To see what we're doing every night of the week.
Yeah.
Okay, good to know.
Helpful and depressing.
And soon we'll be adding reg to that.
Okay, and to then move on, if there's nothing else, to the CCSU annual work plan. So, in the orgs, it asks you to become familiar with this. We've reviewed this a number of different times through Leaders at Work reports and through other times, but this is, in, in essence, this would be the, the focus points, the points of emphasis for the superintendent. Then they tie into the various standards and sections within the job description, and then there's a rubric of, of accomplishment that goes to that, and sort of, it, it has the, sort of the, the loop, the circle there, performance. I think I've said before in Leaders at Work, maybe also here, is that, you know, the annual work plan needs to be created with an appreciation and understanding of what already's on the plate, so that it's not a matter of just kind of loading up and having your job be special emphasis, because there is a job to be done. So, why don't I open it up as people have reviewed it? Erin, did you have any questions or takeaways or things to add to this for the next year going forward?
No, I, I really am digesting right now.
Yep.
So, you know, I don't really think I have any specific input at this point, I think I'm just looking forward to learning a little more about some of it, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Jack?
No, nope. I mean, having lived through this process on the first iteration, you know, on-
I mean, having lived through this process on the first iteration, you know, I recognize that this is a, a, a continuous improvement process that we're looking to do. I think we, we got some good traction last year when we started doing this. I like the momentum that we're going, I know we're going to flush out additional details as this, as this comes through. I, I know it's complicated when we have the sinusoidal, you know, we're, we're ramping up on this annual work plan as we've had the formative assessment on this year's, and we're coming down on this one, and, and, and we're riding the wave, so to speak, on this, and, and, so I'm happy with the process, and I'll leave it at that.
Yep. Al?
Just a thought on the budget, 16 budget. I really think it ought to be divided up into different phases. Some of the strategic thinking about where the largest cost drivers are going to be coming from, and to be thinking about early on about how we would address those challenges. It sometimes feels like surprise mode when we get the budget, when we see that this is way out of whack, or this didn't happen, but having, letting the board get some early in indication of what things are changing and what could be seriously impacted gives us a little bit more time to think about it, think about possibilities. That's the only aspect of, of the plan.
Yep.
Just to see a little bit breakout of that definition, because there are a lot of things that could happen between now and next, next budget will go wrong.
For sure.
Gary?
I didn't see anything that stood out in my first read-through, I, you know, go back and dissect it, had nothing to add to it, nothing really was like a blatant thing that concerned me.
Al, your comment made me think of the, you know, it still is an, an activity that we haven't done too much. We've poked at it, and we've, we've wrestled with it, but it's coming up with the board's AWP.
Yeah.
Because I, I think when, in that, I, I really think of, if we take a look at our meeting structure and our agenda and how we address it, I think some of those conversations, we're not looking for answers, we're actually looking for prompts to think about.
Right, right.
And I think that that is more of something like, starting in September, and October, and November, and December.
Should be an ongoing piece of the meeting.
Yeah, no one needing to come to the meeting with an answer for us, because I know that work, that work is basically, you know, that's when they do that work to get it to us for January, but to be that sense of, this is what we're seeing around the corner, this is some of the things that we're feeling, these are the, yeah, and then we can just sort of sit with those ahead of time so that we're not trying to digest that and the numbers in the month of January.
Right, right.
So, I think an AWP for the board is still an interesting thing to play with. Jude, I, I mean, I'll have a chance at leaders at work, but, you know, my bias is that it's, the red is going to be significant, the, the study onto whatever is next with that, either it's no vote or a vote and then a transition. So, and some of these things are certainly elements that the superintendent is ultimately accountable for, but in the leadership model, should and are, you know, delegated. So, it's one of those places is, you know, for us to have this in the loop of the superintendent's evaluation, there's all those things you're accountable for, S-BAC, but, you know, please don't spend like an enormous amount of time with, you know, there's so much that happens on the ground with S-BAC as well. So, it will be some of that work at leaders at work trying to figure out, because the daunting list is daunting.
It is, and I appreciate the sensitivity, knowing that next year we begin teachers' negotiations again, the red process will be underway, your board and the Westford Board will be doing some strategic planning, I, I assume, through your appreciative inquiry summits. So, those will be areas of focus, and we'll be looking at that climate survey, this is the third year of implementation, so you'll have some longitudinal data over three years, a question about is this still the right tool, is this something you want to continue every two years, or what the original timeline is structured?
Yep.
Those conversations, so, so a lot of our work is continuing because it takes, you know, a few iterations for us to really understand and analyze the data that we're getting.
Great. Okay, I will move us to the next agenda topic. It is our consent agenda. On the consent agenda is the approval of the warrants, approval of meeting minutes, of, of...
December 15th.
December 15th. Approval of the letter of retirement, does it have to be?
From Lori Thompson.
From Lori Thompson. Approval of the donation, fro, does that have to be?
From the Hanaford Health Schools program, a thousand dollars.
The request for activity recognition from the Ultimate Frisbee Club, and the recommendation for professional appointment of David Rome, math teacher at EHS. Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
No.
I just had a question. What does it mean when, what exactly does it mean? Is there a budget impact if something wants to be recognized as an activity? What exactly are they?
Why don't we, why don't we take that off?
Okay, sorry, then just...
Pull that one.
So, we'll pull the activity recognition off, and can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, with, with the exception of the...
Activity recognition.
Activity recognition.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So, I think, and, help me, but I think that we have a policy that, that all clubs have to be recognized, or they basically don't fall under our insurance, they can't use, there's, you know, various things like that. So, recognition may come with some indirect costs and some modest direct costs, but we're really talking, you know, modest, it is, it is a matter of being recognized. Something has to be recognized for two years before it's...
Varsity sport.
Here.
When they're talking about, there's not, we're not going to be funding like transportation to go play other teams, we're not going to be buying uniforms at this point, things like that, okay, this is, okay, that was my only question.
Is this going to be for varsity sport eventually, or just a club?
Um, it, it may, it may just terminate as a club.
It's an activity right now.
I mean, we've seen things like, you know, volleyball came and became a sport pretty quickly, bowling has become an, indoor track, Essex won its first state championship as a club. So, yeah, so it, it can, it has a variety of lifespans to it.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to accept the activity recognition?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes unanimously, unanimously. Okay, so may I have a motion to move the U-46 board into executive session for a discussion, a personnel discussion regarding...
A personnel legal matter.
A personnel legal matter.
So moved.
Thank you very much.